Hi, how are you?
Good, yourself?
I'm very good, thank you.
You're ready to roll?
I'm ready to roll.
There's some other...
Yeah.
There's a ton of call this meeting in order. Motion, I just couldn't have a motion to call, but what I always forget. Call, please call the order. Call the order. Has everybody got a chance to read the minutes? That's a nod, that's a nod.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And comments on that before we... I thought they looked pretty accurate. And I remember not as well. Alright, so I have a motion to review minutes. Is there a motion? All in favor? There it is. Comments on the new business? No, excellent. So, uh... We should probably talk about the new business. Y'all think? Module home?
Jeff, you want to start it out?
Well, this is... I'll just give you a short of how this come up. Had a young couple who bought a modular home that's a land in Dover. They had already bought it all, it was all tied into one loan, and they were kind of freaking out because when I told them they couldn't have double wides or modular homes. Uh, I got ahold of Mr. Hamlin, he said that the rule had changed, the state law had changed. But our books, it still says they can't have them, but we got to go with the state law. I'll let Mr. Hamlin go with the moral land, so...
So, uh, sort of two issues, modular homes and manufactured homes. Uh, so manufactured homes, uh, the construction goes is, uh, regulated by HUD. They come with a red tag on them. Manufactured homes are more commonly known as mobile homes. And, uh, the Tennessee statute added a provision, and I've included it in the... Actually, there's one of the appendices that says, uh, for manufactured homes, uh, for single wides, the local municipality can have control over where those go. But for anything more than a single wide, so double wide where there are multiple components to it, as long as it looks relatively like a regular single-family house, it can go anywhere else. A single-family house can go subject to setbacks and that sort of thing. Uh, so, uh, put together a proposed amendment that would clarify the, uh, zoning ordinance a little bit, add a new definition for manufactured homes, uh, provide some clarity on that. And at the same time, too, uh, so modular housing, there's a Tennessee Modular Buildings Act that, uh, has sort of a similar thing saying, you know, modular homes, you should treat them the same as single-family homes. And you know, one of the questions has been, how do we different... How is there differentiation between a mobile home, a manufactured home, and say a modular home or other, or other homes? And part of it is the tagging process if you regulate it. So, uh, manufactured homes or mobile homes are regulated by HUD. They come with a red tag on them that provides that. Modular homes are regulated by the State of Tennessee, which is Department of Commerce and Insurance. Um, so, uh, the other part of this amendment then would just be, uh, changing the name from prefabricated dwelling to modular home and then updating, uh, the modular home part. Uh, now, one thing I do want to raise, the current definition in Dover's organ... Dover zoning ordinance, sorry. Would say three times fast, I can't even say it one time. The Dover zoning ordinance had a limit of a minimum of 600 square feet for any prefabricated home. So this new, so just want to raise awareness, this new proposed definition would eliminate that minimum, and I believe that will help with some discussion on tiny homes as well. Uh, so that's sort of two parts of it. One is cleaning up the manufactured mobile home part, so it lines up with the Tennessee law is. And then the modular home, again, lining up with what Tennessee law is. And then the final part is, uh, just a couple possible cleanup items in the existing, uh, zoning language for the mobile home part. I can walk through those two for example.
I know you said that they would have to look like the normal homes. Do we have the same in how that's supposed to be done, or is that from the state as well? Would that be something that we can decide so that they won't look like they've pulled in for the night, you know? So, where do we stand with that as far as the rules?
I'm glad you brought that up. So, uh, as part of the manufactured home definition, uh, one of the things that seek to do, and this is draft language, so this can be adjusted, tweaked, whatever, uh, is to address that to say, hey, if you do these eight things, then Dover would consider this making it look like a single-family home. So really glad you brought that up, I'm sorry I missed that on the...
That's okay.
So, um...
And like the size of the lot? Does it have to be a certain sized lot according to whatever the size is? Or is it just, is it just mandated for just a certain sized lot that if we go on, like regular homes?
Uh, it can go anywhere where a single-family home is allowed. So it could go in R1, and if it's in R1, it has to be the R1 setback requirements, R2. And just to clarify the requirements, so one is an affidavit of affixation so that the manufactured home becomes part of the land. So that means, you know, the mobile home is tied to that land, so it isn't a case for someone to take the mobile home off and leave the land. Cleaner blocking of underside structure with substantive material, metal siding or sheeting for blocking is not permitted. That's the second condition. The third condition is removal of the trailer tongue. Uh, the fourth one is access and needles removed or otherwise shredded or blocked from view. Next condition is secondary electric service meter aligned from the primary line physically attached to the dwelling, so looking up directly to electrical power. Next condition is dwelling must have three foot by three foot landing outside the exit doors and steps to ground with handrails and railing for safety. Next condition is all piers under the dwelling set on poured concrete pads two feet by two feet and 10 inches deep. Next condition is water lines should have shut off now for easy accessibility. Uh, next condition is clean outs on sewer line. And final condition is yard around the multi-section home is ceded and scrubbed. So again, this is just draft language based on some other communities what I've seen done. And again, any of these can be tweaked and adjusted and that sort of thing.
So you're saying the state now requires cities to adopt this? This is, this is the state document, the state...
So one of the things I've... I'm running under appendices today, so, um, appendix B, I should have page number these, I'm sorry for that. Okay, I'm sorry. Well, let me see.
I got, I got so much in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much, Jeff. Appendix B?
The appendix B, uh-huh.
So it's a stat commute.
And, uh, this is the actual offer of the Tennessee code animator.
So we don't have a choice?
Essentially, the state laws control. Uh, and then the one thing they need to offer, such manufactured residential dwellings should have the same general appearance as required for site-built homes. So that's the opportunity then to say, you know, to meet that, we're asking, uh, an applicant to meet these eight or nine criteria.
And each one that is going to put one in will have to come before the ESEA, right?
Oh, no.
That long, it's long, okay.
It's similar to if you're going to build, if you have a plot of land, you can build a, you could build a house on it, or you could theory put a double wide. So, uh, and either way, it's the same process, it would go up directly to permitting. And then, uh, the permit in which that setbacks and in the case of like a double wide would be, have you hit all nine of these conditions or whatever conditions, uh, that the town has asked.
So those eight that you gave us just came, was similar to other towns that do this, right?
That's language for...
Uh-huh.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I just want to make sure the eight that you read us off was from similar, uh, from different towns that are going through this, right?
When we're talking about double-wide trailers, we're just talking about manufactured homes. Did a double-wide trailer come in the same?
The state recognizes a double-wide trailer now as a manufactured home.
But it has to meet all the criteria before it can actually do it. They just get fully needed and set it up, right? And it'd have to be according to the size lot, if I'm understanding, I'm just, I'm repeating this to myself. And the size lot would be as, as they would be building a home. It would have to meet the criteria, the size lot, everything that's adopted that we have, they've got to meet that in order to have the home.
I don't know if it was you, or Ms. Lydia, or, uh, Bishop Jim Pleasant, who's a fire marshal for the state of Tennessee. One of them said the reason why this has happened is makes homes more affordable for people about it. And that was like her biggest reason for them doing this.
Will they have to get like a building permit, or how does that work?
Well, I, it's, yeah, there had to be a permit.
Because, you know, they're not actually building, but they're having to build all of this...
The only thing I'll be, this, like I said, this is coming from Mr. Pleasant, the state fire marshal. I would inspect the foundation, the anchor, and he's supposed to help me go over all that to understand what I need to be looking at when I'm looking at that stuff. But then after that, then I was put in, so...
So then what, what can force them to do all the things that need to be done?
Well, I can't, I won't give them a permit unless I...
The scurrying, yeah, they'll say they'll do it, but what if they don't?
They got to pre-do it.
You have to inspect it, right?
Yeah.
So they expect it and they have to prove it.
But they won't get a...
So they can't live in it?
They won't get a stip of occupancy if it doesn't, doesn't get complete.
Okay. Now, will that be, like, when they, when they start, um, another system probably, but like with electricity, water, sewer, uh, where does that fall into place when they move it on there? How does that, how does that take place? Like, you know, moving on there, you know, you've got to have electricity, you have water, and then you've got how all of these eight criterias, how does that fall in place as far as, you know, which comes first? Do they all come at the same time?
Well, it, like the water tap, that can, that can be done, you know, of course, they have to pay for all that.
Right.
But the water tap and the sewer can be done on margin and, you know...
Just like in your construction.
Yeah, just like...
Just like that, okay. That's what I wanted, yes, thank you.
So is the family that came to you, is their, is their house tagged right?
Yes, yes. That's what the, one of the biggest holdups with them was, after we found out that, yes, we got to let them have it, was making sure that their tag was, was correct, so...
And they have the green tag?
Well, no, it's a, it's a red tag.
Red tag.
But once it, once it goes together, and they've got the affidavit for one, and I don't know, but they send the affidavit, if I'm not, if I'm understanding this living right, they send it to the state first. And then that makes it, I guess, like you was talking about, where the land and the houses all, all in one.
I thought modular homes didn't have a green tag?
Uh, for modular, this, uh, mobile homes are per the state, a mobile home, well, this goes to HUD, so we can, we can blame the federal government on the same line. But, uh, a mobile home is essentially a manufactured home. And a modular home is a whole separate thing.
Are we talking about a modular home or a double-wide trailer?
A double-wide trailer, a double-wide trailer would be a manufactured home, but a single-wide would not. Uh, well, a single-wide is still a manufactured home, but, uh, there, there's allowance for a single-wide, uh, local municipalities can control where those go. But once it gets to double wide, then it becomes treated the same as a single-family home.
Because they never hold up while they don't, they don't get the best windows in them, they just don't hold up.
But we gotta go with what the Tennessee state, Tennessee state county is saying and stuff.
We adopt these, these criterias, where does that leave with the single home? Do we adopt that separately, or does that follow with it? That, the mon, like the single wide that, that you were talking about, that would have to be separately treated, does that change?
Well, I think the single wide, we still, we, we still have to let a single wide in.
Okay, okay. Well, when we don't let them come through, then that's just something we're not passing at all. That'd just be something that we don't...
If I'm not mistaken, the single wide, we still, we still have a way to...
That Jeff was saying, no, we can't let those come in, right?
They're like, go with the mobile home.
Yes. And I think that there may be some, you know, just, just to be straight up too, a lot, sometimes there are some special things, like whether there's medical hardship, or someone's rebuilding a house or so, I mean, you need to double check, but a lot of times there's a provision like that where, uh, someone can have a single wide for a limited basis if they go in front of the ESEA and receive permission. I would just need to double check if that's in here, but, uh, essentially it's either in the mobile home park or, uh, that's special necessity, having a house burnt down, need a place to live, or, you know, I'm caring for my, my mom, my dad.
Your parents think it's very subjective. That's kind of, I keep going back to that, thinking to myself, you know, what makes a mobile home or a double-wide home look different than a state-built, traditional state-built home? The peak of the roof is never right, you know, mobile homes have flat roofs, and other houses pointy, your roof 30% slope, 20% slope. And there's, there's never the same appearance, you know, and I can't always, the roof is almost, almost ubiquitous, but I can't put my finger on any one thing. The scurrying, we kind of nailed, yeah. You need that, you need that block perimeters, that, you nailed that, because that's always different enough. So when, once you, once you fix it to the ground, you put it on a foundation, blocks, it's not vinyl siding or whatever they found, laid around, but what else is, what else distinguishes it? I'm trying to think of, you know, what can I do?
Porches, decks.
Well, yeah, it does say like...
Porches, decks, yes.
Three by three, but it doesn't say three by three minimum.
Very small.
If I put a big porch on it, it says three by three minimum, or just three by three, and that's sort of something.
That'd be something we could say, yes, that would make it look more, yes.
And then you have...
A minimum of three by three.
And then you've got like the last point about piers, uh, two by two. At this point, you're almost sort of dictating what engineering is required. So, that would be, again, that would be a minimum expectation, but there might be more engineering. All piers must be two by two feet, 10 inches deep, but it might be that if that's not acceptable, it might need to be a, a bigger pier perhaps.
Well, the modular is three by three, isn't it? One of my rivers is three by two.
It was three by three landing, but I mean, that's, that's a minimum. So you have, we didn't say that, but I would think that was sort of obvious.
Uh, I don't think there's actually any criteria for modular homes.
I want those, they said it on. I've read something, it was three by three.
Oh, here we go, I'm sorry. Modular homes should meet the specifications of latest building code and mounted on a permanent foundation and have a green tag issued by the state of Tennessee Department of Commerce and Insurance.
And if there's some storm or tornado or hurricane?
It's an anchor.
Consideration for this, you know, in Florida, they make straps around the houses now to keep, you know, always hear of mobile homes are always getting hit by tornadoes. Is there something like that in these, is that, is that a thing that anybody would?
There is something that can be added, because I've seen that concern a lot of times where homes are not properly anchored, so big storm come along, and why, because that happened, uh, I think earlier this year. I think that's where a couple folks, houseway, not too far from, I think it would've been Madison, I'm not sure.
They just put blocks and just set it there.
Yeah, it's not really anchored in.
And honestly, I don't think a three by three is big enough as a porch, because when you think about it, I mean, that's just...
You can hardly turn around to go in the door.
That's, that's nothing. I mean, you know, especially like if you had, you had to bring in like an ambulance, EMT, something like that.
That's not that wide.
You know?
You can't, I would get all the way, but don't let it get through, it can't travel.
No, I, I would not be in favor of a three by three if there's any way that we could go a little bit, because if you're going to make it look like a house, you're not going to have a three by, a three by three. Especially if this is not level land, you've got more blocks on one end than on the other. So it's really gonna make it...
Is a three by three being stipulated by the state, or is that something?
Is that something?
That's something we have, right?
I'd say like an eight by eight, if they're gonna do it like a home, that would be what I, that's still small, but an eight by eight would be...
It'd look more like a home.
It would look more like a home, it sure would. Now, if, if, when we do this tonight, this house that's already started, Jeff, will they have to meet the eight criterias?
I, I told them that whenever come up that, yes, something would have to meet this, so...
So they will, they will have to go in, it takes effect tonight, so it will, they will not be grandfathered in, they have to go along with everything that we pass tonight, right? Is that correct?
Well, and...
Or not?
This is, uh, men in the zoning ordinance, so the next step then would be to move the...
To the council. Yes, right, but I'm saying until, you know, until everything is, is protocol.
And how many readings do you have to have a council before it goes on, before it becomes effective?
Do what then?
Two readings in council and force a check?
Well, it, it will be two readings, or will it be two readings?
Yeah, y'all have to...
Will it be two, yeah, it'll be two readings, yeah, it'll be two.
But I'll avoid giving the stipulations.
So that'd be, you're going to have it to be kept in order to do, yeah.
Once you give them the stipulations, uh, we change that, that, I don't want to put these people, people on tension.
Well, if you, whatever y'all pass tonight, once it goes to the, to the council.
Yeah, once it goes to the council, and it just, yeah.
Do you feel that?
I do, I just, you know, the porch just kind of concerns me a little bit, and I just, I feel, this is me speaking, y'all may not agree, and that's, that's okay. But I just think, you know, a three by three is too small.
Well, there are the long...
And so a six by eight would be better, you'd give them six by eight.
Eight by eight.
When you do an eight by...
Say square footage.
The what?
Just say overall square footage, say.
Because it might fit the house better, if it was longer or wider, depending on...
Yeah, longer would, would better in the house.
But we need to change that part of it. I, I, I would like to have, that, that's just what I think of.
Well, what do y'all want to go with on the square footage?
64, eight by eight.
Eight by eight?
Six four seems nice.
Six by eight square footage.
I think that would be a nice...
But then if 64 square feet, it could be one foot.
Out the way around. It's a brand name.
They'll look more, they'd still look like a, like a home or something, yeah. But you know, it's not smaller than three feet.
In any one dimension.
That's just, that's my suggestion.
He said, yeah, right.
That would be the minimum. If they want to put a bigger one, they'd be under...
Now, do y'all have the regulations on the back porch, the, the back porch? Meanwhile, we're talking about porches and...
So maybe that's only for, obviously, they could have multiple exits and entries. Would that be for each, or just, at least one must meet that?
Maybe a four by six in the back, because it wouldn't be seen. I mean, I don't know. It may not be a lot of room to put in the back, but it may, you know, depending on the lot, because you do a four by six, at least, I don't think a three by three is like, you know, that's just...
It's kind of like, in that old house over there on Sears, it doesn't look right.
But if you do a four by six on the back, or a six by eight on the back, or something like that, or maybe a little bit smaller, because I don't know that you would want the porches, they come back, this in the front.
Some of those, some of those...
I'm just speaking for me.
On hills, you know, and there's a gap behind it.
Exactly, exactly.
So it needs to be enough that they can get down and have some flat area to go, because you've got to be an opening in the back. It could be a little smaller in the back, but...
Right, that's what I'm saying, like a four by six, uh, four by six on the back, or six, you know, a, a minimum of that, on the back, yeah. Just, I know that I have to go before a vote, but that's just something that...
Is this addressing any of the other ones?
If you want to have a nice entry on the front, and then have a porch on the back. And I don't have much of a porch on the front, that's a little bit more of an entry.
Yeah.
And it's not a lot, it's not a lot of room on it, but because of the orientation of my house, I would prefer like a porch, would that be all right? Would that be, so maybe, you want to say one or the other? At least one entrance must have a 64 square foot porch entrance, and the other one?
But if it's looking like a home from the, from the road, when you threw the road by, and you want it to look like a single home, and, you know, you put it the back, what is gonna? It is still gonna look like a home.
We're trying to get it out of them.
My bad. And, and my question is, is there going to be any kind of fees, permit, structure fees?
They're still, they'll still pay the 35 cents.
You'll have to pay a structure fee, just like if, you know. Just want to make sure we've just got everything. And what about, I mean, for making it look more like a home, I don't know. I mean, my house is nothing fancy, but, but I'm thinking maybe would there be like shutters or something that would make, I don't know?
I think you'd get too picky then.
You think that's what I, you know, but I'm just saying, if you're trying to make it look like a home, I don't know. And, you know, it's cheaper building a house from, from what they're signing.
I don't know those signing homes cost as much as some houses do.
So it's all like the, the four changes I have so far, just to make sure, what is in page, uh, what is a minimum 64 square foot porch in the front?
In the front, yes.
Uh, and I'll do some research on anger again, or if there's something to...
Yes, thank you, yes.
And then, uh, and then for the piers, just make sure a minimum two by two, or, or...
I just think we...
Stronger language?
I think you don't want to be prescriptive in your fourth from last point, that your all piers must be this and this deep. I would say, you know, at, you know, you call that a minimum, or, I think you don't want to be prescriptive in such, someone says they have a two by two foot hill on a swamp, and it sinks, whose swamp is that? Because I told them how big it was, and now, it's not, now it's sinking, they should probably have it...
Is this the state requirement for two by two?
No, this, uh, this was just sample language, well, this was draft language where I looked at a couple of the communities, how they chose to interpret the state, allowing you to try and make this look like a regular home. So these are completely flexible to be, you know, within reason, as this, being out there.
Water line's gonna meet the normal water code, there'll be a meter box in Friday.
Water, all that'll be just like a, like a house.
And how, it'd be detected like electric?
I don't know how CEU does it.
It'll just be fashioned under the house, just like it, ours is fashioned under the house.
I don't know how CEU does it.
And they hook it under the house, and they have a little thing that goes around.
I don't know how they do a...
Is that not a state requirement then? That's just what CEU wants to do? They don't have a regulation of doing it?
For the tiny homes, when Darnold was here, he was talking about like a separate box outside.
On poles, I think.
We're making these like a home, like a regular home, so I didn't know what that would be.
So for, for manufactured homes, so single wides and double wides, arriving at the site where it is to be occupied as a dwelling, complete and ready for occupancy, except for minor incidental packing and assembly disruptions, location on foundation supports, connection to utilities, and all that. And that's language that, that could be filled out more too, if you would like. What was it about scurrying? The foundation's in block, or is it just...
All block.
It's all block, okay.
It's all block. I believe, isn't that what you said? It's all block.
Scurrying, all block.
Oh, sorry. Perimeter blocking of underside structure with substantive material, metal siding or sheeting for blocking is not permitted.
Okay. Anything else?
Do you need anything from last search?
We've got, we've sort of, we've sort of got your, got your figure, yeah.
Well, and the other thing too, just to be sure, so this is manufactured homes, these are mobile homes, uh, just want to make sure, I don't know if there's further discussion wanted on modular homes?
Which is what the tiny home falls under.
He could. If the minimum square footage is removed, then it can be treated as a modular home. Uh, well, and I guess tiny homes can either be stick-built on-site or built, I believe the proposal for here is built in the factory and brought in as a modular home.
Well, should we close this part out though, and if there was a, open, it's a modular home, you know?
Okay.
So...
You know the names are gonna have to fit when there's a, somebody with a double-wide mobile home.
I won't give them Jim Pleasant's number.
I would want one next to my house.
We should order a minutes, I guess we have the oldest.
So I guess we have to vote, vote on this, or...
But were you going to go back and, and get us more information on, um, what you had said a while ago about a check on tiny homes? Yes, the tie bounds, do we need to, do we need to pass it based on that, or do we Yes, the tie-downs, do we need to, do we need to pass it based on that, or do we need to wait and see that the tie-downs?
The cleanest process might be, if you are comfortable with this, I'll clean up, make the justice space on what's been discussed tonight, have a fresh version for September.
We won't, we will not have a September legal. So we'll have a lot of paper that we have, and so it'll be October.
So I don't think we need to vote on any of it tonight, we're just gonna let him re-draft, do a kind of a little bit of a draft, and then we'll look at it again in October.
They'll pass it, they'll hold it down.
If there's anything that any other cities do to make it look more like a house, if there's anything we can do along those lines. I could do some more research on that too, so I just pulled a couple of examples, one that seemed to work pretty well, so.
That would be nice, thank you.
See, some people build a thing like a porch, front and back, and they build it up over the trailer, and then it just looks like a house. They did it over modular homes, and then they do it over trailers.
That's like with shutters, I won't get into more particular things.
But they look more like a house, as opposed to a trailer.
I think the one on the trace looks that way, if someone's...
Just hang it to it.
It's been a long time since I've looked that way, but, yeah. I don't think we've got a vote yet. We can go on with the next order, is it?
We just need to table it.
We'll tell you, yeah, yeah. All right. So the old business of the tiny home.
Do we have to vote on the table yet?
I believe we can just leave it on the agenda.
I don't care.
Oh, good. Do I vote?
Yeah.
Tiny homes. What are we trying to decide on tiny homes at this point?
I do have a list here, these are just some that I jotted down of the non-conforming laws, and correct me if I'm wrong, but a non-conforming lot is anything on twelve, twenty square foot, and then, because twenty thousand square foot with sewers, how much land you have to have to build a home?
So I believe it's lots of record. So these are lots, these are lots that don't meet their current zoning requirements, so there are one, so for instance, there are one district that's too small for an R1 lot. So, and the issue is, that lot was there before the zoning ordinance was there, so they fall into the special category.
And these are just a few that I just, you know, they don't have addresses, but they're all, they're all lots.
My question is, if the single, if the single-wide homes fall under that, would that be the same, would that be the same as the tiny homes? If we pass the tiny homes on the non-conforming lot, would that be the same for the single-wide mobile homes?
So for tiny homes, there are two different types of tiny homes. One is one that you actually stick-built onsite, so it'd be very similar to building a private or single-family, and I think that both one, these are actually modular, and I believe it's been verified that these are actually modular homes. So they don't have a red tag on them, they have a green tag, and they are regulated by the state of this instance, as opposed to our...
You couldn't, like, somebody come and say, I want to put a whole home in that size lot, then that would not, that would not be, it would be a different tactic.
And definitely too, what the proposal's doing, just so we're clear, this is, again, a draft, it's proposed solution, so the proposed solution would be making that change to the definition of, changing from prefabricated, prefabricated homes to modular homes, and it's eliminating the minimum square footage that you could have in a modular home, and then it's also adding a definition for tiny homes, just to provide clarity on that. And so what that means then is, so that doesn't address the lots of record process, the lots of record process still is in place. So for the developer, if he's able to identify, let's say, three of these lots of record he wants to put a modular tiny home on, he's still gonna have to come before the BZA and say, here's one thing about putting a home, I'd like permission. So that's another thing too, where the, where the BZA has some leverage over what goes on to that particular lot of records, so a little bit of protection there too.
So we've got six here, right?
That's just the six, they're just off the top.
So that would just be, would that be a maximum of what we would have of tiny homes?
There's more, there's more lots out there, I just, you know.
So...
You just found the six.
You just found the six, okay.
We're saying, yes.
And just to be clear...
So it could be six or more, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
No, I just said, it could be six or more.
And just to clarify, with this definition, the way that it's set up, you could have a regular lot, if you wanted to, under this amendment, so if you had a regular R2 lot that meets the minimum requirements, in theory, you could, well, you could put a tiny home on it. So, you know, it creates opportunity with a lot of record, but then also, in theory, on a regular-sized lot, you could put a tiny home on as well.
But that would also have to come through the BZA?
Not as long a regular lot. And maybe if that's something that wants, if that's something y'all want to adjust or tweak, then I just wanted to point that out too.
That house they built on hill crest, it's an awfully small, it's an awfully small house, it's tall, but it's a small house. Is that a small lot?
No, actually, no, the lot is pretty good sized, that's just what type of house they want it to be.
That's a really popular lot.
Yeah, they're really... We'll be discussing a lot more of these coming in the future.
I would like to say it's a lot more than that. Well, those that are built out there, like, if I join in Holland, there's like six of them in a row, and they're narrow houses too.
Yeah, I think, I think his house somewhere, I want to say it was like one thousand and two square foot, I think is what it was.
It went on hill crest?
Yeah.
It's a two-story?
Yeah. So, but I mean, I mean, he has all right to build it, you know, and like I said, we're, that's, we've got another discussion of that coming up, it'll probably be in October when we own these houses.
Because that was kind of hanging on a hill on the back.
Yeah, well, his lot was all the way back, it actually comes back out towards Anco. It comes around that house, back up to Anco.
He should sell us actually to the network house. Okay, so what do we need to do about tiny homes? I mean, I'm okay with building them on these lots, these non-conforming lots.
So I agree with you, I think we're, I'm on the same page, that's good. Yeah, but putting a tiny home on a one that isn't, why would you do that?
You put that on a large lot.
I mean, by our books, you could still actually do that, but you'd have to physically build it on there, because what is it, six, three hundred?
But you don't have one, if you build it on a big lot, you don't have, you don't have one, you can have two.
Would that be something that we would need to pass? That if you built a tiny home on a large lot, you would only be able to do the one and not two, because that could make the lot non-conforming law.
Yeah, but doesn't the law say that they have?
It is, it's...
Okay, okay, yes.
One principal, one principal joint on the residential lot, so it's already happened.
That's, that's perfect, I just will need to reconfirm that, make sure we're all on the same page.
Buy a second tiny home, nail it to the first one.
Build storage shed up, yeah, and put it on.
Everyone's gonna have a storage shed.
And there'll be another tiny home, with a little connection between them. Be like one of those trailers, what are they called, those?
RV?
The semi, the semi-trailers, you know.
Or the container?
The container homes, where they build those two of them hooked together. Those are pretty neat places.
In case the question comes up, I covered it up here, because modular homes have to have the green tag and regulated by the state, so there's a little protection there.
So we don't have to worry about container problems?
No.
They're built in different places then.
What are we voting on now?
So do we need, do we need a non-conforming lots?
I think we should let tiny homes on the little, on the side lines.
On these, the non-conforming lots? On the non-conforming lots only.
Yes.
Can we do that, or no? Okay, if we pass them, like you said, you have to put them on a big lot, you put it on a big lot too? If you're gonna put one on...
That's, that's a now's written where you could put it on any lot that you could put a home on.
But in our case, they would go before the BZA. Not only if it's on a non-conforming.
So if you have an R2, if you have an R2 lot, and you wanted to put a tiny home on it, you would go through the permanent process. The way it's currently written.
If it's in our policy that, that they can build tiny homes on there.
The way this is currently written, but obviously, this is a draft that can be adjusted and tweaked.
So we can, we can separate that, we can actually adjust that.
So we could limit it to non-conforming lots, if we wanted.
That's all.
The answer is a not sure.
That's okay, if you say that, then it's not right, yes, absolutely.
I think Pete'd have a big lot and build a little tiny home on it.
I know, but...
I think it would probably be self-limited, if you're gonna pay that much for a lot, you'd probably put a regular home on it, but the risk is, there's no guarantee.
There's a risk, probably.
So I guess that's what we need to figure out, I guess, table this too.
So we could decide, I'd rather do that in the safe resort.
I think immediately, some guy's gonna build a little home, and he's gonna, he's gonna be like, like me, he's got too many cars, it's behind his house, but there is no behind his house, because his house is this big. So the guy's got, he's got a, he's got an RV and a boat and six cars, and two cars broken, but they're behind his house, so everybody can see them.
We can't get the size of cars.
We got a lot of people I hate in this town, that is the main thing, right there.
I've got a picture of the tiny house with the big five-story garage behind it, and well, thirty-five feet, they can see a little bit, but...
You don't say nothing yet.
Well, like I said a while ago, it will be, we will not have a meeting in, what is it, next month, September? Because there'll be several of us out, so we will follow back up on that, maybe not too. I guess we have nothing to vote on, so.
So I mean, we're gonna have to make a decision sometime on tiny houses, we can't just keep tableing it, we've got to make a decision sometime.
So language needs to be super clear, I mean, we need to make sure without a doubt that's something we want to do, because otherwise, we may be back to, so, that's the thing. Now that this mobile home has come about, it's made this a little bit, you know, got more to think about, I think, for me. So I make sure, and I'm not trying to keep anybody down, because we welcome all of our city taxpayers, I'm not saying that, I just want to make sure the wording and the, and everything that we've done, that we know that we've done our very best to do that, myself.
And just to mention, I'm saying, the intent is possibly limiting where the tiny homes could go, but they're...
Yes, non-conforming lots.
Yes.
I should say it's a non-conforming lot.
Yes.
I have a motion to adjourn.
I might.
Second, you have a second? All in favor?
I have a second.
All in favor?